Move to excuse Councilman Owens.
Second.
All those in favor of excusing Councilman Owen, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Is there a motion to approve the minutes for the March 11th, 2024 regular council meeting?
So moved.
Suck it.
All those in favor of approving the minutes of March the 11th, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Is there a motion to approve the agenda for the March 25th, 2024 regular council meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the agenda for March 25th, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Committee reports, is there any others besides recreation?
Thank you, Mayor. Rosford Parks Recreation Committee, four three eleven twenty-four, and attendants Toby Ladisma, myself, Brenna Reynolds, Dan Wilburn, Caroline Zokowski-Eckel, and Terry McKnight. Meeting was called to order at five fifteen. Capital Improvement Projects, the concession stand equipment has been delivered and they are turning the water on to the facility soon. Vets Park Equipment, the board was updated on the playground equipment that is set to be installed at Veterans Park. There will be a new zip track installed and a new playground structure. Both pieces are all-inclusive. There are also some new swinging benches. Two thousand twenty-four capital improvements. The board had discussions on two thousand twenty-four capital improvement plans. The Recreation Department has plans in place for a splash pad behind the Recreation Center. With renovations to the fountain planned, Mr. Ladisma came up with the second option for discussion. This included renovations to the rec center such as new flooring, new workout equipment, gymnasium upgrades, and new doors and locks. It also included some park additions such as Beach Street Park Playground Equipment and shaded benches at Vets Park. The board said they would still like to have discussions on the city fountain before deciding. Two thousand twenty-four levy discussion. Mr. Ladisma got information on setting up an account for levy promotion and was looking for someone to be the treasurer. Park Maintenance, the Park Department put three of its pickleball courts up with the wave of nice weather. Baseball scrimmages are already underway. Programs, Spring Break Camp three twenty-five through three eight twenty-eight. This program is similar to the Summer Day Camp. Community events, Acon three twenty-four at noon at Edward Ford Park, voting on three nineteen, Athletic Boosters Reverse Raffiner Rec Center four six, Eclipse four eight, Riverfest eight seventeen, Halloween Parade ten twenty-seven. The meeting was adjourned at five fifty P.M.
Any comments or questions in regards to the Recreation Committee report? Okay, reporter of the mayor and administrator, Allison and I do not have anything this evening. Do you have anything?
Just really quickly, we wanted to remind residents that brush pickup will take place the last full week of April this year. So that's April twenty-second through the twenty-sixth. Residents may place brush curbside in front of their homes in piles of no more than six feet high by six feet wide. So we just wanted to remind them of that, as well as the citywide shredding event, which is scheduled for Friday, April nineteenth, from ten A.M. to one P.M. You can bring your documents that you'd like to have shredded, can bring them up and drive them through here and the Public Works staff will take them out of your car and put them in the shredding truck for you.
Okay.
That's all I have, thank you.
Any comments or questions? Mr. Watcher, is there any correspondence?
Piece of correspondence, Mayor, which is a letter from the Arbor Day Foundation, which I'll summarize. Dear Tree City, USA Community Member, on behalf of the Arbor Day Foundation, I'm thrilled to congratulate Rosford on earning recognition as a two thousand twenty-three Tree City, USA. Residents of Rosford should be proud to live in a community that makes the planning and care of trees a priority. We're excited to celebrate your commitment to the people and trees of Rosford. Thank you again for your efforts. Best regards, Dan Lamb, Arbor Day Foundation Chief Executive.
Introduction of ordinances. Is there a motion to read ordinance twenty twenty-four dash nineteen by title only?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Twenty twenty-four dash nineteen is an ordinance authorizing the administration to dispose of certain surplus property not needed for any municipal purpose and declaring that emergency. This is the first reading.
Go ahead.
Chief, what, you just getting rid of the Ford Explorer then?
Yeah, it was replaced, so we didn't want to auction it back.
I'll move to suspend with the second and third reading.
Suck it.
Any problem with us doing this this evening or any questions in regards to it? No.
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to declare ordinance twenty twenty-four dash nineteen an emergency.
Second.
All those in favor of declaring that emergency, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move adoption.
Suck it.
Vote on the motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four dash nineteen. Heben?
Aye.
Tinney?
Aye.
Eckel?
Aye.
Obendorf?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Is there a motion to read ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty by title only?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Twenty twenty-four dash twenty is an ordinance authorizing the award of a contract for the Glenwood Road Resurfacing Project and declaring that emergency. This is the first reading.
Go ahead, Caroline.
Mrs. Murray, what's the timeframe on this?
We need to have this to ODOT by Friday. And I actually, back on February twenty-sixth, I had pictures and explained that this would happen and that we wouldn't have the bid that we need to award, we wouldn't have the low bidder until this meeting. So council has heard about this project for a while and I actually warned everybody back on the twenty-sixth, one and a half, uh, back, these are the minutes from the February twenty-sixth meeting that state. She told council that the bids for resurfacing of Glenwood Road from Mandale just north to Buck Road will be going out. This is a project and a grant from ODOT for three hundred and seventy-four thousand. Council approved last fall and due to when the information needs to get back to ODOT, it will require council to approve the ordinance, accepting the bid as an emergency at the last meeting in March. So these are from the minutes of the twenty-sixth.
Okay, I'll move suspension of the second and third readings.
Second.
Does anyone in the audience have a problem with us passing this this evening or any questions in regards to it? No.
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move to declare an emergency.
Suck it.
Those in favor of declaring that emergency, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move adoption.
Suck it.
Vote on the motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty. Eckel?
Aye.
Obendorf?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Heben?
Aye.
Tinney?
Is there a motion to read ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty-one by title only?
So moved. Second.
In favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Twenty twenty-four dash twenty-one is an ordinance authorizing approving change order number two and amending the contract with Tetra Tech on the annual paving and roadway design project and declaring that emergency. This is the first reading.
So I met with the Public Works Committee last month and they spoke about how on the, for the year twenty twenty-five, they would like to redo Riverside and Hillcrest. They would like to bump that up and do it in conjunction with Jennings. In order to do that, we need to bump up the trunk line system design and the actual design for Riverside and it's River View and Hill View.
It's Riverside.
Is it Riverside? Yeah. Riverside and Hill View.
Go ahead.
Public Works talked about moving this up because it's at the end of Jennings and so we didn't want to put in a new road on Jennings and then a year later tear up the end of it and have all the trucks and traffic and stuff. We wanted to do it all at once. If anyone else doesn't have a question, I'll make a motion to suspend with the second, third readings.
Second.
Does anyone in the audience have a problem with us passing this this evening or any questions in regards to it? No.
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move to declare an emergency. Second.
All those in favor of declaring that emergency, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move an adoption.
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty-one. Eckel?
Aye.
Tinney?
Aye.
Heben?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Obendorf?
Aye.
Is there a motion to read ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty-two by title only?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Twenty twenty-four dash twenty-two is an ordinance authorizing the city of Rosford to enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the replacement of W O O dash six five dash two three three nine, the bridge over Grassy Creek on State Route sixty-five and declaring that emergency. This is the first reading.
Allison, this is actually pretty exciting news.
Yeah, so ODOT is going to come in and they are going to replace this bridge. It's the one by Speedway. They're going to do it in twenty twenty-five, so the funding year begins this year, July first. They will be paying for everything that has to do with replacing the bridge as its standard, as it looks today. That is how they will replace it. However, if the city wishes to have decorative features, we could have it look like this and we would need to let them know by July first of twenty twenty-four, so July of this year, if we intend to do the decorative features. They do need the authorization to do the bridge at all and it will cost the city nothing to replace the bridge, just to let them come in and replace the bridge. We need to let them know that by April the fifth. So we have one more council meeting next Monday prior to. And then if we decided to do the decorative features, it would cost the city, but we would need to let them know by July first of this year.
Mr. Toth?
Can we look into the Penna or maybe apprenticeship?
Absolutely.
On working on that? Because when I drive by Penna, I was part of putting Penna up. I was part of putting up Myers, Giant Eagle, whatever it's called now, in Walmart. I take pride and I think that would be something good for the kids in the community. Drive by there and say, I had a part in putting that in.
Kevin, how would we do that?
We could make an agreement with Penna, side agreement with them.
Thank you.
I presume, I would presume ODOT would allow that.
Mrs. Tinney, then Mrs. Eckel.
Mrs. Murray, how much was the cost for the city if we do?
If you do the decorative one? Our estimate is from last fall and it was three hundred thousand for this end, yes.
Mrs. Eckel?
Bob, that's a good idea. I didn't think about that. I know that most of my projects are buried in the ground, but a couple of them, like my water towers are up high and I like to drive by and so I think that's a great.
I mean, I like to see stuff that I had a hand in building and I can't imagine somebody not taking pride in that. I mean, if they can't take pride in that, that's on them, but I know what I did in fourteen years as an ironworker and I've seen my projects and I take pride in everything I've done.
Do you guys want to okay the bridge and then we'll worry about the other stuff at another day?
Of course.
All right, is that a motion?
Suspension of the second and third readings.
Second.
Does anyone in the audience have a problem with us passing this this evening or any questions in regards to it? Then you need to come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Jim Verbaske, three oh two Jennings. I just have a question. The ugly pipe on the west side of the bridge, is that, what happens to that?
That'll go away.
That goes away?
Yeah.
The one that leaked water for all the years until we capped it?
Yeah, that's part of this project, just to fix that drainage issue.
Anyone else?
No.
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading?
Hold on one second.
Somebody else?
Yeah. Please come up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, hi, Brian Bramble, nine sixteen Dixie Highway, just up the road. Two questions, how long will it take? Any estimates?
I don't know.
No. Is it going to help with the water? There's been several times in the last year where the bridge has been closed during heavy rains. Is this going to help with the overflow from the storm sewer system?
I thought we corrected that.
I think the plan is to help with that and eliminate that pipe.
Will you be sure of that before?
We can double check, yeah, we can look into it. It should take less than six months. I mean, I can't say for sure.
Okay.
More the water thing, it's crazy.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Watcher.
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move to declare an emergency.
Second.
All those in favor of declaring that emergency, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move adoption.
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty-two. Eckel?
Aye.
Obendorf?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Heben?
Aye.
Tinney?
Aye.
Is there a motion to read ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty-three by title only?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Twenty twenty-four dash twenty-three is an ordinance amending supplemental number five, the annual appropriation measure for the year, beginning January one, twenty twenty-four and ending December thirty-one, twenty twenty-four, passed by ordinance twenty twenty-three dash seventy-three. This is the first reading.
Go ahead, Chris.
Thanks, Mayor. So there are two items that we're appropriating for tonight. The first one is the Riverside Hillcrest Road Reconstruction. I believe it was requested at the last council meeting that we appropriate funds for that project tonight. The other item is additional funds needed for the outfit for the new EMS-capable U T V. We initially budgeted fifty thousand dollars for the U T V this year, but per the chief, we need some extra funds to complete the outfit. Happy to answer any questions.
Where are we at on the total for the U T V and all the equipment?
Around sixty thousand with this amount.
We can utilize that more than just the day before the world ends?
Depending on delivery, hopefully though.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else?
I'll make the motion to suspend with the second and third reading.
Second.
Is there anyone in the audience that has a problem with us passing this this evening or any questions in regards to it? No.
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move adoption.
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty-three. Heben?
Aye.
Tinney?
Aye.
Eckel?
Aye.
Obendorf?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Is there a motion to read ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty-four by title only?
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Twenty twenty-four dash twenty-four is an ordinance authorizing the administration to work cooperatively with the surrounding fire and rescue departments of Perrysburg Township, City of Perrysburg, City of Northwood, and Lake Township, in an assistance to firefighters AFG grant application for the purchase of electronic Knox boxes and declaring that emergency. This is the first reading.
I know this went through the Safety Committee meeting. Chief, do you want to speak on this?
Sure. So the commercial businesses in town and some residents, this is primarily designed for commercial occupancies, I'll take a mechanical key that we have to gain entrance to the box that has the key to the business, but it is not interchangeable from jurisdiction to jurisdiction. So if we were to go to Perrysburg City and need to access their Knox box, we cannot do it. So Knox has gone to an electronic format where you have a, like a, it's a fob, almost like your car key fob, that is programmed and we all agreed to put all of these codes and you have to rekey the Knox box, but we could then use one fob to access all the jurisdictions' Knox boxes without hassle and it creates an audit trail back as to when you access the box, when you use the key, so you don't have the he said, she said. Also, if you lose the key, you can disable it and it, nobody can use it. So it's a grant that's headed by Northwood. We just had a meeting here, we could go Thursday to gather more information and we'd like to proceed on with this joint venture.
Mr. Toth?
I think it's a wonderful idea.
Is that a motion?
Yeah.
Excuse me, Mr. Toth, may I just ask a quick question?
Does that also apply to police stations too? Is that going to be shared or is it just fire and rescue?
Right now, it's just us.
Thank you, Chief. Where are we at with the motion?
Want to make one?
I'll make a motion that.
Dispend the second and third?
Second, dispense of the second, third reading. I'm sorry, I stuck where we were at.
I second.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone in the audience that has a problem with us passing this this evening or any questions in regards to it? Go ahead, please come up to the mic and state your name and address for the record.
Bethany Bramble, nine one six Dixie.
I'm sorry, just.
Bethany Bramble, nine one six Dixie. I know what the FEMA gave, three hundred and twenty-five million.
I'm sorry, can you speak into the microphone, please?
Well, I'll just stick to the other thing. Are we going to do like H D C lock, locking caps also? Are we going to look into that for residents?
For hydrants?
For, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
Or the residential Knox box?
There's one for residents and there's one for the hydrants.
Correct.
I think that's a really good idea.
Yeah, we're not looking at the hydrants and then.
Not yet.
The residential Knox boxes will still be mechanical.
Okay, so nothing for fire hydrants.
No, we don't usually have a theft or vandalism box.
Oh, you don't? Okay, because I know some areas they do, so.
Yes, there are some areas, but we are lucky enough not to have any.
Okay, and it's a grant program, so that window has closed, March eighth? So is this for next year?
No, it closes April twelve.
Oh, does it? Oh, because I thought I read March eighth. Okay, all right, thanks.
Sure, no problem.
Motion to declare ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty-four an emergency?
Second.
I need, all those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Now?
Now.
Okay. Motion to clear twenty twenty-four dash twenty-four an emergency?
Second.
Those in favor of declaring that emergency, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move for adoption?
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty-four. Toth?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Heben?
Aye.
Tinney?
Aye.
Eckel?
Aye.
Obendorf?
Aye.
Hey, are there any resolutions this evening?
No.
Okay, council remarks, Councilman Toth.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to make sure we can get on our, for Monday's meeting, the ordinance for the safer grant, that we can vote on that. Besides that, I've got nothing. Thank you.
Mr. Obendorf?
One thing, Mayor, I had an opportunity to really review Brenna Reynolds' proposal, Special Committee for Personal Review of the City of Rosford. I think it has a lot of merit to it. I like it. I'd be interested to know how the rest of the council feels. That's all.
I agree.
Ms. Akko?
I agree. Mr. Obendorf, I think there's a lot of good, a lot of good could come from such an idea. So I am in favor of it. I want to remind everyone that our council meeting is next Monday because of the eclipse. We moved it up to April first, so I guess we don't need to suspend with the committee of the whole since we have another meeting already scheduled for that day. And I, it's exciting to see so many public works projects on the agenda because I know that it's been a long time waiting and some of these have been in the planning stages for a long time. So the fact that we're actually able to go to construction and stuff is, is pretty exciting. And I want to thank everyone for the phone calls and emails and texts regarding the Fire Department and other matters, but I certainly appreciate everybody's input and it's very helpful to come up with, some of those emails come up with ideas that I didn't think of myself and/or points to it, so it's very helpful. Thank you.
Mrs. Tinney?
I agree. I think we should explore this committee and I think we should do it quicker than, sooner than later. I think it's a great idea. I like when stakeholders are involved. I think we can come to a decision fairly quick. And other than that, I think I'm good. Thanks.
Mr. Heben?
I echo the previous three council people.
Mrs. Reynolds?
All right, well, I'd just like to say thank you, excuse me, to everyone who's reached out to me regarding the committee idea. There's been a lot of positive feedback and I wanted to remind everyone just to read the purpose and recommendation of the proposal. As our community continues to explore each option proposed as a solution to staffing, this committee will allow stakeholders from Rosford City Council, Rosford Fire Department, and the community to thoroughly review each plan to determine a best path forward. By establishing this committee, we would allow ourselves to streamline this process while providing ample time for a thorough review prior to any deadline set by the Secretary of State for local questions and issues. So with that being said, I'd like to make a motion to establish a special committee for personnel review at the City of Rosford Fire Department.
Second.
So moved. Kevin?
This has to be done by ordinance and I have not seen what you're referring to there, so if you would like to give it to me, I could have an ordinance prepared.
Okay, I asked about that previously in the week and was told to bring it up during council remarks.
No, no, I know, I'm talking about the ordinance.
Right.
Yeah.
So, but we can approve the committee tonight, right?
You can do that, that's fine, but it won't go into effect until the ordinance.
Right.
Is enacted.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So who moved? You moved?
Then I'll second.
All those in favor, does that need to, since that's a motion, I'd take my normal voice.
Say aye anyways.
All those in favor of approving the motion to create a committee to study the fire issue, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Kevin, can you explain the process real quick?
Right, so I'll have to take, if you could give me a copy of what you got there, I presume there's membership on there?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so what, according to, uh, our code, um, council can establish a special committee, the last one that you did was the turn review committee. Um, it's then the mayor's appointment of the members of the committee subject to council's approval. So, I don't know what membership you're talking, you, you want three members of council or...
Three members of council, three members from the fire department, and three community members.
Mm-hmm, so that would be the mayor's appointment of tho, of those individuals subject to council's approval.
All nine positions?
Correct.
Okay.
And do they have to be, the citizens have to be Rossford citizens?
If that's what's on the, yeah, if that's what's in the document, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, do I need to move to do anything else?
Mm-mm, I'll have the ordinance on the, for the agenda on Monday. If you could just give me a copy of what you got.
Yep, okay, thanks.
Okay, uh, audience remarks. State your name and address for the record.
Sean Bany, one seventy-nine Elm Street. I'd like to read some definitions first. Uh, gross misconduct, any unethical or unprofessional behavior an employee engages in. Gross misconduct in the workplace generally involves serious actions that threaten the safety, health, and reputation of their colleagues and the organization. Misfeasance, a transgression, especially the wrongful exercise of lawful authority. Malfeasance is an act that is illegal and causes physical or monetary harm to somebody else. Malfeasance is intentional conduct that is wrongful or unlawful, especially by officials or public employees. Rossford Municipal Ordinance, Section Three, Paragraph ten G. City Council has the power to expel or remove any member of council for gross misconduct, misfeasance, malfeasance, or nonfeasance in office, or for disqualification from holding office, or for conviction while in office of a crime involving moral turpitude, or for violation of his oath of office, or for persistent failure to abide by the rules of council, or for absence without justifiable excuse for three consecutive regular meetings. I ask the council why Councilman Heben is allowed to remain on council after the events on Saint Patrick's Day that meet several of the definitions of this action when it is within council's power to remove him from office.
Anyone else? Come up to the microphone, please, and state your name.
Council has no remarks to that?
Sean?
That behavior is acceptable?
Sean, you're, you're done speaking. No.
We want to know.
This isn't, this is an organized meeting. Louis, you're up.
It is not a conversation. I ask for council's opinion on why they're not acting on that.
And they didn't respond.
They didn't, they didn't respond.
Louis?
Not acceptable.
Do you want to s...
A follow-up to the, the committee. Governor, they have to be appointed by the mayor? Why would that be?
Ross municipal code one-one-one-point-one-two-B. Special committees may be created by a majority vote of the council members present at any regular or special meeting. Members shall be appointed to these committees by the mayor with confirmation of council. That ordinance was passed in nineteen seventy-seven, I think, when you were mayor.
Louis, could you state your name and address for the record, please?
I'm sorry, Louis Bauer, two seventy-one Margaret, Perrysburg. So, but council can change that ordinance if they want, correct? If that's how they decide they want to make the appointments, uh, perhaps part of the group?
Yep, apparently in nineteen seventy-seven, you thought this was a good idea.
Well, I thought it probably was.
Yeah.
Little did I know what would happen thirty or forty years later, so, but they could, though.
All ordinances can be amended by council.
Okay, thank you.
That whole book right here.
Okay.
Is there anyone else?
Chris Segura, six-two-four Brunns Drive. All right, I don't feel like the target on my back could get any bigger, so here we go. Neil, you've successfully run off almost sixty years of fire service experience between the former assistant chief and the chief with your micromanaging, bullying, intimidation, and arbitrary investigations. You stated that the department heads are some of the best in the state of Ohio and the country, but your phone conversation leading up to a retirement announcement suggested otherwise. With that, Rossford Fire and Rescue Department will soon be without a chief. My question to you is, what are your plans to replace the fire chief of Rossford Fire and Rescue? You mentioned in a, uh, your recent Blade interview that you have two to three strong candidates within the fire department. You referenced a couple of our lieutenants, a guy that was recently promoted to captain, and a deputy chief. I'd just like to clarify, we do not currently have a deputy chief's position, but do you feel, who do you feel are these strong candidates? And what will the future of this position look like with the potential of being outsourced to Perrysburg Township?
Yeah, I've, uh, I've thought long and hard about it. Uh, I haven't done interviews with anybody in the department, but those are forthcoming.
Have you discussed this position with any of those potential candidates?
I have not. That's why I just said that, uh, I've not held interviews yet.
Who do you feel are the strong candidates?
The three that I mentioned or the four that I mentioned in the article.
Um, you didn't mention any specifically?
Because I'm not ready to.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it was in the article.
Anyone else?
Jim Roboski, three oh-two Jennings. I have a, Mr. Kirk, I've inter, I've sent you two emails now regarding public record requests for fire department levy information. I sent you one on the thirteenth and I sent you one on the twentieth with no reply back.
Seeing them, they must be in my spam. I'll check them tonight.
Okay. You have an obligation to reply to those.
Understood, well, we always do.
And I guess now, in, in this day and age, when we're conducting investigations on the union steward, you know there's labor laws out there that permit you from doing that. You're investigating them and don't, don't deny that you're not. Are you investigating Chris Segura for coming to co, coming to these meetings and representing his personnel? Are you re, are you conducting an investigation?
I believe we conducted an investigation.
Why?
Because word got to us, to me, uh, that people were going to, uh, were signing up for drill, getting paid for drill, but attending council meetings.
Because they're fighting for their lives right now. They're fighting literally for their lives. And you're going to retaliate against Chris Segura?
I don't do that, Jimmy.
Well, you're doing it right now.
Oh, I'm not.
You're doing it right now.
Look, I, nobody's going to bully me.
Show everybody right now.
Nobody's going to bully me or tell me...
I'm telling you.
That I won't investigate something that I hear is wrong.
Well, you know what, it's retaliation and there's labor laws.
It's not retaliation.
Yes, it is.
And of all people...
He has done nothing.
For you to even show up in this building is unbelievable.
I pay, I pay my taxes, you rent. Don't forget that.
Is there anyone else?
Doesn't deserve applause.
Diane Wool, two sixty-four Jennings. Um, first of all, any person who lives in this community is welcome to come to these meetings. And I think it's terrible that you would go there and say that to a good citizen who's concerned about a fire department, someone who committed a whole lot of his life to the Rossford Fire Service, and may or may not have made some judgment, just made some poor judgment calls, but the bottom line is he knows a lot about fire service. He knows a lot about how the, the city has written their laws about fire service, and he should be respected for that. Secondly, I have, I sent an email to every member of council, Mayor McKinnon, Ann Allison, there is an entire block of a street that does not want sidewalks. And I've come to the conclusion that it doesn't really matter what we want, but they'll tell us what they're going to be like. There's people that are going to be losing their entire front yard. I'm not losing my front yard. A sidewalk on Hoffman does not affect my front yard. It affects my side yard, it affects, it does affect my patio where we sit and eat dinner on a regular basis. The sidewalk is for one block of a several-block-long street. There's actually seven homeowners on that street. None of us want the sidewalk. Is there going to be a point where we're going to be heard and we're going to be listened to? Because I'm concerned that several of my neighbors, well, one neighbor in, it definitely, will have about two feet off of her front porch before she lands on a city sidewalk, and she will lose all front yard, except for two feet, maybe two and a half. Depends on where the center of the street is really defined.
These things are planned years in advance.
Yeah.
And we made a decision, city council, myself, that, uh, when we didn't have resources, if we ever did get the resources, when we did projects, we were going to do them right. Curbs, sidewalks, they raise your property values, they make the city safer, they make it more mobile. Um, we have to do what's right for sixty-five-hundred people. And it's not a sidewalk to nowhere, it's a stump. So, as we continue with road projects, that, those sidewalks will grow. So, hopefully, one day, not so far away, the, uh, the future of this city will have all curbs and sidewalks. It's also not only safety, it's beautification, and it manages stormwater.
Um, curbs and sewer project will manage that stormwater as well.
That's part of the project.
Right, and I, yeah, I don't think there's anybody, anybody having a problem with having curbs. I think there, there's no one on my street that I've spoken to, and I've spoke to, spoken to two blocks worth of people, but I only spoke specifically, the ones that are named in my petition are only those on our block that was going to be immediately affected. Because it seems like if, if ever the other blocks of Hoffman get sidewalked, it'll be five, six years in the future, is what those people were told. So, I guess, I guess, how about listen to us? How about tell us, tell us you understand why we don't want to lose our front yard? Why we don't want to have people literally walking their dog and they could literally have their dog shit on my patio because that sidewalk will be that close. I'm bothered by that.
I believe in beautification, I believe in safety, I think real attractive, successful, uh, communities are mobile, and I've studied this and looked at this for over twelve years.
So, there's other streets that managed to get curbs, but not sidewalks. Can you give me the reason why some of them got curbs and no sidewalks and some of them?
Resources, but mostly, uh, stormwater, uh, improvements. We weren't able to afford to do the stormwater improvements, but we wanted to get some paving down and, uh, make this...
On Hawthorne, right around the corner, that was recently done. They don't have sidewalks.
Yeah, but they're getting them.
But those neighbors also petitioned that they did not want them.
I never saw those petitions.
Good. I guess we're getting sidewalks.
Mrs. Echol?
We understand that people are losing their front yards. I understand why you're upset, that it's going to be, it's going to feel like it's an encroachment, um, on your property, but it's the right of way. And so, Neil's right, I mean, we've been talking about sidewalks for years and years and years and years, and it's kind of been on that list of, um, what we can do to make the community better, more livable, once we have the, once we can afford it, which now we're in a position where we can do those type of things. And the Jennings Road Project and the Windsor Road Project, or Windsor Drive, is going to have sidewalks on both sides of the road, which both are conduits to the, um, arena. And so, the connector on Hoffman will connect all the Windsor Road residents that go down and allow them to stay on the sidewalks.
And then have them crossing at Jennings where it's, I mean, everybody knows here that no one stops at that stop sign, so that, I shouldn't say no one, very few people stop at that stop sign. So, we have them crossing there rather than near a, a quiet little cul-de-sac on Windsor over to the other side. I mean, there's, there's certain things that just don't make sense to me.
Well, it's, it's a, it's a start. We can't redo every street and install a curb and a sidewalk on every street at once. Uh, we have a plan, it's going to take a minimum of five years. And, you know, if you look at attractive, successful communities, they have curbs and sidewalks.
Okay, and we have looked at connecting. Was attractive enough for me to move on the street that didn't have sidewalks? Actually, this is the second street I've lived in on, in Rossford that didn't have sidewalks. And to be honest, we could have moved anywhere when we moved to Rossford, um, thirty-nine years ago. We could have literally moved anywhere, and we chose Rossford without sidewalks. So, it's still attractive to us.
Still attractive to me.
Good, good. Now, but we can afford these sidewalks, but we can't afford our own fire department?
Yeah. I announced, uh, before the election at Meet the Candidates Night that we were going full-time and that on or at or before the first of the year, excuse me? Yeah, don't disrupt the meeting. Um, and we're doing that. There is a special committee in Rossford. It's called City Council. And they're elected by the people for the people. And there's no, there's nobody, they're not an outside board of directors that are appointed by a few shareholders. Bob Towe lives on Sanus, Larry Obador lives on Shire, Caroline lives on Birch, Rachel lives on Hanum, Chris lives on Windsor, Brenna lives on Eagle Point. They, they don't fly in twice a month to attend a board of directors meetings. They're people that care, they put themselves out there, and they get paid almost nothing to try to do the best job they can. They, they are your, your neighbors and your citizens. They live on the same streets that you do. Again, they're not a outside board of directors that comes in twice a month...
I don't think anybody was applying there.
And forces their will on the people. They are the people, and they were voted by the people for the people.
Well, so far, Ms. Reynolds', um, proposal was the first time I saw anybody say, what does the community really want? Because I hear, I get messages from people on a regular basis, once I become vocal at city council meetings, that are concerned, why can't we keep our own? If it's going to be three-point-six-plus a year, why can't we have our own fire department? And I said, you got to come to the council meetings and ask. But Brenna's proposal was the first time at any point anybody said, you know, like, let's gather some more information, and for that, I really appreciate that. And thank you all for making sure that's going to happen, but why did it have to come to that?
We've been working on this for two years and it didn't come to that. Again, those proposals have been out there, we've received other ones. It's, they're available to not only the members of city council, but to all the citizens. This is not doing, this is not being done behind closed doors, it's being done right out in the open.
May I ask, how many meetings you've had with Perrysburg Township?
Uh, in the past two years?
No, in the pla, past three months.
Um, Allison, do you know the exact amount?
Two.
Two? And how many with Northwood?
Four or five, maybe?
Yeah. And Lake Township? I meet with those guys all the time. Uh, it's been brought up a couple of times about my relationship with Bob Mack. Let me tell you exactly what that's about. He's been a very good friend of mine my entire adult life, and so has Joe Schaller, and so's Ed Schimmel, so's Tom Mackin. I knew those guys long before any of us became mayors or, or trustees. And I, a lot of times, the only way things can start to happen is if you have those relationships. Because you know them, they know you, they like you, they trust you, we're all working for the same common good. Um, I don't shy away from the relationships that I have. I feel very blessed and grateful. I'm very honored to be able to call Northwood's mayor, uh, Ed Schimmel, my friend. I'm very honored to call Bob Mack and Joe Schaller from the township my friend. That's, really helps when you're trying to accomplish things.
Absolutely. I'm not, I, I guess I've never, like, I've seen people discuss, you know, the good old boys thing. I, I'm not buying that. What I am concerned is not enough attention to what the city taxpayers would like to see happen.
Again, we live in the same city you do, and I don't hide in my house. I'm out every single day. I go to the games, I go uptown to the joints. I mean, y-you can find me if you want to talk to me about something.
We've talked before, I know that.
Right, so I'm very, very, very accessible.
I mean, you're five houses down.
Yeah.
I know where to find you.
And going back, most of the investigations we do on employees, nobody knows about because we hear something, we investigate it, and we find out there's no merit to it. You know, that's, that's the other thing that, that was brought up this evening. We're going full-time. We, we are. We have no choice. It's the way it is. Uh, what that's going to look like is not going to be my decision, it's going to be city, city council's decision. And that's, that's how it's going to play out. But the other thing, too, I see a lot of misinformation on Facebook. We cannot roll part-time people into full-time positions in the city of Rossford or any other place. Anybody that's on the department now that's not full-time, and we have one full-time employee, and that's your chief, will have to go through civil service. And that's not Neil McKinnon or city council forcing their way on people, that's just the way it is. It would be easier for us to be able to grandfather in and just say, all right, we got, we got a good, good group of people, you're now full-time, let's go.
It's in the city charter that they have to have that. I understand that.
Yeah.
It's like state charter, probably. And that, that I appreciate, but I think we have quality individuals that would do whatever it took to get on our full-time department, if it truly was a Rossford Fire Department full-time. We have...
That's, that's, that's the other thing.
Back there, and they're talented.
That's, I know, I know them as well or better than, than most people. Um, the other thing, too, is according to the state of Ohio, um, you cannot force somebody to have residency in the city that you work. Like, mo, a lot of our full-time guys, which I think were fifteen, uh, they live in Rossford or in the Rossford School District, and they work at Springfield Township, they work at Toledo, they, they, they work at other places. So, this, this isn't exclusive to Rossford. It's not new to Rossford. It's just the way it is, and those are the per, parameters and the rules that we have to abide by. And again, so, once again, we're going full-time. I don't know why folks can't take yes for an answer, and it's not going to be my decision, it's going to be city councils. And nobody, nobody can change that. That's the way it is.
Well, I appreciate city council having open ears to maybe some of those outside-of-the-box ideas that they hadn't thought of. Because I think that we have talented people here already that would love to be full-time.
I would love nothing more than for our guys that are here now become full-time.
I'm glad to hear that.
Because I've always, I've always felt that way. I, I thought it was a mistake when the state started allowing people to work in outside communities. I would rather have every police officer that works here live in Rosford.
I don't care where they live.
I'd rather have.
They come here and do their, their job well.
I'd rather have.
I don't care where they live.
Every firefighter who works for Rosford live in Rosford.
No, I'm saying these people that are here, these people that have served.
And I'm saying, they will have.
I don't know where half of them live.
I'm saying they will have the opportunity.
Good.
To apply, whether it's here, or to a district, or to a municipality or township that we contract with. That's, that's the way it is.
But I do believe that if we sell out to Perry'sburg Township, and sorry, there's no other words I can use to say that.
It's called contracting out?
Contracting out, selling out, whatever it is. We're buying their services for 3.6-plus, about $1 million. That being said, I don't think there's a reason why you can't say, okay, here's the deal. Part of our deal is, if these people pass those certifications that they need to have, and pass the civil service exam, they get preferential hiring over other people that haven't served the community of Rosford.
Why wouldn't they? They're already here. It makes all the sense in the world.
That's what I wanna hear, that they're gonna have at least that protection.
I've said that publicly numerous times.
Okay.
The one thing that, that got some traction is when I said they would have to test. It's just, again, City Council didn't make that up, I didn't make that up, that's the law.
And they know that.
All right.
All right. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? You need to come up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Thank you for giving me a second. Yes, it is council's decision. Were they invited to either the first two meetings that you had with the township?
No.
Is there a reason?
Yeah, because that's not how it works. I went to.
Why doesn't?
Because it's a fact-finding, it's an administrative thing. I'm the executive branch, they're the legislative branch.
Oh, I know that. I remember that one.
At the end of the day.
You're saying it's your decision that they cannot?
I invite who I want to be there.
Pardon?
I invite who I want to be there, when I meet with an outside developer, a company owner, a citizen, or a local municipality.
But you just said they're important in this decision-making process. The final decision is theirs.
Yes.
And you don't want them in your meetings?
No, I didn't say I didn't want them. I said I didn't have them there.
Are you wanting to have them there?
Which ones?
Any ones they choose. I.
I would probably have Mrs. Echol at the next one, since she's president of council. But again, we're not, we're not there yet.
Okay. Just simple question. You will have represented Mrs. Echol at the next one?
If I think it's important and it's the right thing to do, absolutely.
Well, I think.
I'm not, I'm not keeping people out of meetings. I've been having these meetings for almost 13 years.
Talking about the two most recent ones with the township trustees, or their committee, where you're, you're not in negotiation, correct?
Everything's in negotiation.
I thought they said they're in facti, they're clarifying your.
It's the same, it's the same thing.
Mayor, can I finish? Then you could. They clarified it as saying they're, clarifying your request for proposals. That's what's going on now. And then when that's complete, you'll get a negotiation. Would you say that's correct, what they're saying?
Yeah, we're looking at, from infrastructure, to geography, to the best response times, to costs. I mean, it's, it's not something you can just snap your fingers. It's, there's a. There's a ton of minutia. It's very, very complicated, and.
Simple question. I asked a simple question.
Yes.
Can members of council attend that that wish to attend? They don't have to.
They can run for mayor.
Pardon?
They can run for mayor. I'm not having a free-for-all.
Are you saying you're gonna refuse to allow them?
No, I said I will invite some when I think it's appropriate.
When it's appropriate? Okay, you're, you still won't answer.
I just said.
When's your next meeting?
We don't have one scheduled yet, do we? It's.
So dance if you want.
There's no dancing. I'm just telling you.
It's a simple question. I will if I think so, or.
Yes.
But you won't say that they will be invited, anyone from council that would like to go?
When I think it's important and it's, and it's the right thing to do, I'll invite a member of council to any meeting I'm having with anyone I'm having it with.
Mayor, the city charter, right to create and establish positions, departments, eliminate departments, belongs to City Council, correct?
Yes.
You don't think they have a right in this?
Mayor, you may want to point out to Mr. Bauer that there are no elected officials present, no trustees present, no other council members. This is, this is like, I'm answering your question. This is like opening bids, okay, or preparing plans. Those are, those are done administratively. That's his job and that's our job. It's presented to council, that's their job to make a decision and investigate.
Kevin, you're giving your opinion now versus a legal opinion.
No, I'm giving you the fact.
Tell me the charter where you're supporting what you're saying.
He's, we are the administrative.
I know what administration is, sir.
That branch, right? Our job is to propose options to these people, as the mayor has been saying over and over.
Why do you wanna hide what's going on from City Council?
Not hiding anything.
Then invite them. Then just invite them.
It's not their job.
You know why?
You got 10 seconds.
I can't say good morning in 10 seconds.
I'll give you 15. Very generous this evening.
Trustee told me Wednesday afternoon, in the city minister, or township administrator, they think it's a good idea, and they would have a member of the trustees there. They only could have one, because they only have three, which means they can't have two. So they're not there because someone from council's not there.
That's not why.
I don't know if they know that, that not indicated that at all. I can tell you that no trustee has been at any of our meetings.
Oh, I know that. I know that for a fact. Okay, but that's not the question.
Because they understand their role.
No, sir. How do you know they understand the role? I think they know their role. And they're a three-member board that acts differently than a strong mayor, former charter government.
The council should be involved in Chief Kitzler negotiating to purchase a new motor vehicle for the police.
If you want, if they wanted to.
You think so?
Not.
We basically.
Does the charter, would the charter allow them?
It's not a charter question. I'm asking you a question.
No, the charter governs everything.
All right, we're.
By policy, should they.
Is there anyone else?
So the answer's no.
I already answered it. I'm gonna, I'm gonna meet with who I.
I know you don't answer, because you don't answer most of them.
I'm gonna meet with who I wanna meet with, when I wanna meet with them, and where I wanna meet with them, and who I'm gonna invite to meet with them. That's it. That's no negotiation.
If they choose to do it under those terms, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jenny Hill, 109 Homestead Drive. So my first question would be, assuming that everything goes forward next week, the ordinance is brought up that for Brianna's council idea, it goes through since most people seem to be for it. That happens, how does someone like me petition to be elected to that committee, or is it strictly just you randomly picking whoever?
Anybody who's interested in wanting to serve in whatever capacity that they wanna serve, to just get ahold of me.
Okay. Well, that's what I was, I just didn't know what the process was, what had happened. So I didn't know if you had to turn in a resume, or go through a application, or whatever. So just get ahold of you.
Yeah.
All right. And then the next thing, when we were talking about part-time firefighters going full-time, especially the ones that want to, or rolling over to the, whatever department becomes next, if it's not ours, why can there not be a lateral hiring practice like the police department?
Because it would be a full-time police officer working in another political jurisdiction that's doing a lateral transfer over to another political jurisdiction to have the same job and have already gone through OPADA and the same tests.
But some of our firefighters are full-time at other departments. Why couldn't they laterally transfer to a full-time position here?
Go ahead.
Yeah, when the civil service is set up, if the, if the commission agrees to, they can do lateral hires.
Okay, so that's.
Police Chief Kitzler does that with lateral hires.
So that's something that could be agreed upon.
Yeah, we're not, we're just not there yet.
Put into whatever agreement comes later. Okay, that's good to know.
All right. Go ahead, Jeff, last one. Did you drop your phone?
No, it's.
Oh.
Jeff Appleton, 177 Hanham Avenue. And question to Diane Wolf's statements about the roads. Why didn't Vernis and Lorraine have to put in sidewalks?
Stormwater. We don't have that solved yet.
I mean, what, the stormwater on their new roads wasn't solved, so you're waiting for that to progress?
Yeah, for reasons.
Similar to the Hawthorne. Okay. The other question is, after, from walking the streets, Windsor, particular Jennings, are there gonna be sidewalks on both sides?
Allison, that's the plan, right?
Both sides? All right, the question is, in some of those driveways, the sidewalk's gonna move up into their yards, some of the houses quite a ways. Mrs. Wolf's for one. Some of those driveways, you can barely park one car in there. Now, is there, do we have a law ordinance? You can't block the sidewalk with a vehicle?
Yes.
So will that be adhered to and enforced?
I'm sure it will be, and if you see it, you should probably call to get it, make sure it's enforced.
I keep calling S for speed reinforcement, but there's no one there. All right, all right, thank you. And the other thing is, I think at the meeting, Tuesday or Wednesday, the facilities meeting, did you guys, was it agreed upon that there isn't going to be a splash pad out here?
We have tabled it.
You've tabled it? As far as, I mean, there's still a possibility there's a splash pad coming, or, okay. My, my question is, where will the manger scene go? Will it go in that position? And also, I'd like to request that we look into updating the manger scene since the stable boy is taking the place of Joseph. Maybe, and it's in pretty bad shape. So maybe when we fix this area up and we set up for that, maybe we could look into getting that updated and show off the city a little bit more.
Got you.
Come up to it, it's all broken up, cracked and everything like that, so. All right?
Thank you.
All right.
Your motion to adjourn.
Got one more.
Hey, Kevin, come on up real quick, last one.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Kevin Yarudiya, 331 Jennings. I don't like disagreeing with close neighbors much, but I'm all for the sidewalks, probably because I still have little kids, and I live at the end of Jennings, very close to the park, and I do see a lot of people with dogs. Every once in a while, I do have to pick up the dog poop, like she says, right out of my front yard, but I guess I just don't care. I like the little kids riding the bikes. On the streets is kind of a, you know, everyone's really cool here in Rosford, which I don't see in any other city. You know, the cars always move to the side of the road with, for people walking dogs, and I always thought that was a real cool thing, but I'm.
Oh, my Rockwell painting.
Yeah, I'm excited for the sidewalks. I have been for a long time, so.
I am, too.
I think I'm one of the few at the end of my block, though, it sounds like, so.
All right, thanks, Kevin.
Mrs. Echol?
Kevin, you live at one of the houses on, you live at one of the houses on Jennings where the sidewalk is gonna be close to.
I have a very small front yard on my side of the street. It just is what it is. I would like the sidewalk.
Is that Oberdorff?
Sorry.
Second, all those in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?